Please stand for the President of the Union. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
There's no additions?
Uh...I would like to add the, um, I think I saw it in your hand over there. Yes, the workshop discussion, the David Redner, what that says.
Put that under, uh...
I'd love to spot open for other under new business.
Yeah.
So you can add it.
Well, we can either put it under new business or guest speaker's communication information.
Business technically, but...
Where?
It was only mentioned.
Yeah.
So it can go under new.
Under new?
With that change on, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
One second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on down to guest speaker's communications informational items. You've got a letter in here regarding the stop sign on South Ninth and Railroad Tracks.
There's an offer here.
We have now, would you pass and discuss this?
What is, what is the, is there a concern if there was a stop sign there for safety coming? Go ahead Jeff.
There's never been a stop sign there and their concern is people's speed on South Ninth Street going both directions. And so they think that a stop sign at the railroad tracks would be a viable option for, you know, getting people to stop and reset their speed when they come off of stock drive. You know, it's, it's not a great remedy for that. I think law enforcement would be a better one. We can put up a couple more speed signs down there, but I don't think a stop sign is a viable way to control speed.
Is there a yield sign there now?
There is no yield sign at the tracks.
Right. You might want to check for the railroad because I think there has to be at least a yield sign there because it's crossing.
That's the county on the far side of that.
But I think the railroad though technically has to maintain either a stopper yield sign at all road crossings.
Yeah, at ours, on North Second, it has yield sign both directions.
What kind of expense would be to, I mean, I haven't read that.
It wouldn't be very expensive, but just kind of, it's a through road, I don't know. Stop signs are not usually a great device for controlling speed.
No, you gotta, you gotta figure out what the legality is with that crossing because you don't want the stop sign there and assume the responsibility of that crossing.
Right.
Maybe that should be on the railroad.
So are we clear, and maybe I'm just unclear, although I feel like I should be most clear.
Can you repeat that again?
Follow my... Is that really our road right there?
South Ninth is.
Yeah, South Ninth.
Really? But at that intersection, do we go past Birch?
We...
Oh, we can go past?
I think we go through the railroad tracks.
On the other side of the railroad tracks is county.
So they would have jurisdiction up there.
I don't understand why we would, I mean, there's no connect, are you dead in right there though? They usually want to flow.
Well...
Kind of interesting.
Because in, right across the railroad tracks, it turns into, what is that, West Side Road?
Stock道.
Or Stock Drive, sorry.
It does the same thing that's for the county though. Well, I think, um, I don't think our TSP talked about it. But so I think it'd be good to talk to the county roadmaster as well about it, even though it may be ours and then let's get everybody buying on it. But also, has the sheriff seen this letter yet?
No, I sent it over to the commissioner.
So I think before we get, you know, going further on this, I think the sheriff needs to see it and even the road superintendent needs to see it. We can double check our TSP to see if it says anything about that intersection. Probably doesn't, but a quick word search might say something.
Okay.
So let's, I, I recommend table this and tell them.
Okay.
But it's, I'm, I'm not opposed to something done there, at least a yield, if that's a minimum requirement.
Yeah, I'm...
I kind of think a stop sign might be nice. I mean, I know, I've come into town of that, you know, all the time or two. I should have.
I think that...
I didn't say I was making a lot.
There's definitely an issue with speeding down that road. It's the same issue I have on Roberta. It's a wider road, so we get a lot of, and I think, yeah, Roberta, that's another one I could bring up. But, um, I'm not opposed to the stop sign at all, but yeah, we definitely need to figure out what.
So you have these, uh...
Yeah, we need to make sure we're on the same page.
So bring it out to our next agenda of, of old business.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, move on down to the DQ, air quality grant.
That was the grant that was sent in.
Yeah, it's just, it's just information because the grants that have been signed, we were already asked for comments.
What, what families drive, what storage should be, what, are those being built or?
Well, it's part of the grant. That's what we're asking.
Yeah, we'll give you more of an update.
What's the timeframe on this, do we know?
Yeah, it had to be in like...
When we...
Twenty years.
Yeah, twentieth?
We should know by November first.
Okay.
Fingers crossed we get it.
We have more than a year to put it in place.
Okay. Now if you don't want that, we'll move on down to public comment. Citizens may address the council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda out of request of the council. And others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes and please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comment?
I don't know if it's really a comment, but, um, I have a copy of your new, um, your application for, um, the lodging tax dollars. And I just wanted, I, um, need some clarification about the application and about LCP's request. And I don't know, am I, do I need to speak with Jeff about it and get clarification? I did talk with Dawn today and she did help some, but there's still a lot of questions here about this. Because according to this, we don't qualify. And, and Dawn did, um, contact Jeff Hedlund and ask him about it. And he said we did, but there is nothing, I'm, I'm really confused. There's nothing in here that says that, um, we qualify and we're, we've been asked to come and do a presentation towards the end of the month. And I just, I really need some clarification. So is Jeff the person I talked to or Jeff Hedlund or?
So I'd, I'd like to comment on this because I think the, the discussion we had, I think we missed a couple of meetings in which we finalized the...
Okay, sure.
This application process. I believe, the rest of the council, correct me if I'm wrong, with the ordinance that we adopted, fifty percent is covered under that application process. However, the other fifty percent can be for other projects that are still tourism related with, of which your, your request still should remain on that application, but we probably cover it under, um, that other fifty percent.
Okay, so we, we would use this...
Yeah, I think there's no other second application, so you might as well just fill that one out. And you will judge it according to, you know, our, our guidelines that were adopted and...
Okay, there's still...
We should be able to still handle it.
Yeah, there's still things regarding the application. There's some questions, um, it's asking for information that is not included in this. So to, anyway, I just need to talk to somebody at some point.
Okay.
Yeah, talk to Jeff, but then I, I still think...
Not...
Had been.
Well, either one, both.
Okay, okay. Perfect, all right, that's all I needed, thank you.
This Jeff can't resolve the other one.
Great, thanks.
If not, then we did this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, do we have any more public comment? Turning down, let's move on down to old business. Kathy Lyles, Lake County Mentor Program, Kathy here.
She's not here.
That was in regards to the funds for...
Right.
Our biggest issue is finding a way to reveal where those funds come from. I have not figured out where we could yet. And if we were looking at it, couldn't go. So that's our biggest struggle, where would those funds come from?
Okay, uh, let's move on down to Fairgrounds Master Plan, Ronnie?
Oh, me? Um, so last time I was here, I gave you a copy of this, this is the second proposal, just so that, for your information, whatever. This was the first portion of it that was completed. And this is kind of the nuts and bolts, um, you know, conditions assessment, et cetera, needs, the interviews with different people, et cetera. Do you want one for your record?
Yes, please, thank you.
Do you want one Jeff?
Sure.
There you go. So in that basic one, it, um, it talks about drainage. We had Jeff out, he was one of the interviews for, for the architects when they came out, um, to talk about electrical conditions, drainage, uh, building assessment, general pedestrian usage, the traffic flow, those kinds of things, building condition, et cetera. Um, in the end of that, it comes up with four different phases, um, kind of, kind of prioritized, real general, because the second part of the, the final part of the master plan, which is what I'm asking funding for, gives us two more, um, two more conceptual drawings after more input and interviews and that kind of thing. Um, and it also gives us more detail on cost and phasing and also, um, oh, potential funding sources for those particular phases. Um, so this is just what they've done to date. And so I just kind of wanted to do that because, you know, we are part of the town, even though we're county. We're in United Jurisdiction. So, um, that's kind of that. Then the new part is actually the main part of it, which will be the new, um, conceptual sites and the more detail and the, how do we get it done? Um, and it will have a lot more community input, stakeholder input, et cetera, to get a final idea of where Fairgrounds should go and what would be the best for it. Funding wise, it's real hard. I kind of fell into the first part of the funding through local economic opportunity funding grant. But before that, I had been trying for two years to get funding on master planning. I have funders who are interested in the actual building portion of it, the project portion of it. Um, but of course, you know, no funders will go into a major project without a master plan, which makes perfect sense. Um, so that's why I was thinking, you know, we are a really good partner. A lot of stuff at the Fairgrounds brings in a lot of money to the town, et cetera. And I know that because I get comments all the time about the cost of hotels. And oh my gosh, you know, that whole thing. And so, um, but so we do have an impact on the town between the restaurants and the hotels and the stores, et cetera. So I just thought it would be a good partnership. Um, of course, I would love the whole amount, but I'm happy with anything. I mean, you know, I just want to move it forward so that we can get it done.
Um, what, what is the amount that you're asking for?
This particular portion of the, uh, the final portion of the master plan, I believe, was twenty-two. We don't have to, uh, it's on here, it's on this little second one, twenty-two five. Um, we don't have to include the other additional ten percent because we'll be doing it directly and not going through SCOW Ed.
What funds, is there a breakdown of where you guys have already fundraised or?
Um, most of our stuff today has been in mind.
Okay.
Um, because it wasn't something that's necessarily in our budget at the time. And so most of all, our contribution has been in common.
And what percentage does twenty-two represent roughly?
This twenty-two right here, um, this is the final. So the first phase, the first document was fifty thousand.
Okay.
And so this will be the final and that's the twenty-two. So it's roughly...
Third.
Okay, yeah. But this is really kind of the nuts and bolts of how to get it done. Is this final phase, or final portion, I should say. And, and the, uh, it was kind of through all the interviews, um, with all the stakeholders, et cetera, the prior, the main priority was put on new barns. And in this case, a new barn would be a indoor multi-use arena type setup. So kind of like if you've been to Crook County or, I'm not sure if Clem does it, but in their indoor thing, so during fair, everything is, is inside and there's permanent winters, et cetera, the whole thing. Um, that's kind of the primary focus for the first thing. Other than some of the electrical and plumbing stuff, but that's the first project on it. And it seemed to be a consensus from everybody that, that was in on the meetings.
Priority.
Yeah.
Am I missing where the, uh, how, arena goes?
Well, so, um, there's a picture in there that's the, just kind of the first idea.
For, for you, that would be it?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's, so that's moving the neophyte over to the other side. But that's just one of their ideas. And it was kind of addressing drainage of the current arena and stuff like that. So, and additional parking ideas. But none of that set in stone. That was just kind of a first draft idea for us.
Here's if it included the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it includes the ATV and the, well, the all ninety-three acres.
Okay.
And so, so if you can see it on the existing plan, you know, we have ninety-three acres and we use what? You know, it looks like two acres on the, on the picture, but, so it'd be kind of nice to have it used more efficiently and productively.
So, how do they understand how we're going to generate all this money for these projects?
So, okay, so if you look at those projects, those are evidently Portland projects. Um, I mean Portland costs or, or big city costs.
Even if they're half, like even if it was half cost.
Oh, there's actually, um, oh, was it Yumitala? It's Lenell, I know the fair managers, I don't know their, who they're from. But anyway, she just got, uh, three new barns for the tune of like six million dollars and got funding through the state. Um, and Hermiston just got tons of funding. So it's, there's money out there for those and this won't be...
It's amazing we spend this much money on those projects.
It's not going to be that much.
But even, even six million and it's too early to, to bring up something on, on a different board to bring up. But, like, this is a ti, I mean, any of these products would be like really nice luxuries. And we've got a lot of, a lot of, you know, older buildings in our communities that, that could use some love.
Yeah.
When I think of any amount of money, when we think about the fair, who, you know, what is it for? And, you know, the soapbox show over here, but it's, it's for our younger generation, you know, back, you know, kids to do livestock and, you know, covered barns seems nice to be out in the sun or weather, you know?
But most of that is, you know, if you talk to a lot of the fairgrounds that, that have covered arenas, they utilize that space year round. I mean, and, and which is only...
It's covered the community, yeah.
I mean, when you talk about it, but it's, it's kind of a standard idea in most of the fairgrounds.
I think that's a big part of it is that the fair obviously brings some substantial income in our community, um, along with, but I totally see where Darwin, you know, goes back. It kills me to see these other places home down or run down, but... Then we'll have this beautiful brand new fair building. However, it does bring in the revenue that can help those who spend the money to fix up.
Well, and if you notice on those cost pages, they have a restroom for two hundred and fifty thousand. I go, come on.
Yes, I assume it'll be a lot less than that.
Yeah, yeah, it can be built for a whole lot less than that.
I'm just, I'm wondering how the north, like, portion of our county would support this. I, I just find it hard to...
Some of the, some of the larger entities would support it.
Yeah, and I, I just, I mean, I, they have, you know, small, radio, round, uh, and I just think they, you know, probably want to see a little bit more improvements up there before, you know, we talk about roads and stuff. I don't want to get way off track, but this is, you know, people like, man, we'd love to get a couple of roads fixed.
But that's a county, yeah.
It is.
That's county.
And that's how, this is in the city limits, as a town council, I keep that hat on when I'm sitting in this chair, but, but I just, it's, it's a lot of money and it just seems like if it brings in more revenue and all this and it uses it around, it could be a huge positive. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be, it's just, um, as long as they're not a whole lot in time. But what you're asking for now is, is kind of a pretty good chunk of money for a plan.
Right. But without a plan, you don't get funding. It's kind of one of those things.
And the money's thin, right?
Yes.
And so, when you say in time...
What do you mean spent?
Like you weren't as...
No, by this, I'm...
Or you're asking...
No, I'm asking for twenty-two to continue, to finish off the whole plan. That's what I was asking for. Or, I mean, I'm not free, or any portion thereof. Uh, you know, it's all kind of piecing it together.
So I appreciate your bringing this in because I want to look it over a lot more today. But I'm not very comfortable right now today making a decision on any amount of money. Although I, I do believe we will give some. I would still, um, like to see what other community partners were kind of pitching in on this next part. And the previous part, like you said, fifty, that was already done.
Yeah.
Was that, I mean, I don't believe we pitched in on that at all.
No.
So was that mostly for...
That was a, um, grant and a additional grant from Ford Family.
So you were able to use the other two grants then?
Um, yeah, the, uh, the Ford Family Grant was a TA grant, a technical assistance grant, that goes towards the project from this through the plan, but we got to use it as. But, so when you read that, okay, know that it hasn't had, it didn't have, um, I shouldn't say board review, that's not it, a whole lot of board input to it after the, this first draft was done. Because that's all done in the second portions of it. Um, and so you'll see in there something about it, well, they refer a lot to a two thousand and ten master plan by Teresa. Uh, but really, it's not a master plan, that's what she labeled it. It's called a facility, it's really a facilities condition and it wasn't anything that was ever approved. But I gave them as much information I could find on the fairgrounds and on buildings and that was just one of those pieces of information. So don't take that for...
So the board, so you're saying the board has reviewed this though?
Yeah, but, but, so it's not the, it's, it's not the final report. So the board didn't give additional information by the end, it's all draft, yeah. Yeah, draft.
And what's the, I mean, ideally, what's the expected timeframe?
Um...
That they would hope to have?
To get the master plan totally done?
Well, just, I mean, if they're looking at doing something like this, what would be your guys' timeframe? Five years, you know, ten years, I mean, some of the projects take a very long time.
I would, just in conversations that I've had, the first project, of course, is the indoor multi-use arena kind of area. Um, and I would think within two to three years, that could be done easily. Because it, because it's youth orientated and there's a lot of money out there in certain avenues for youth and especially in ag.
So this is definitely a long-term project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this will be a long, yeah.
So no more baseball fields?
Why not?
We have ninety-three acres that we can use.
So maybe we'll work that back in on the...
And we don't use any of, and we should have baseball. And I would like a whole separate motorized area too, so that, you know, like derbies and I love mud dogs. But anyway, those kinds of things can be in their own area and not even mess with the arena. I mean, there's just all kinds of things that we can do that would be more beneficial, but... Anyway, so yes, this is a draft, so don't take it to heart, it's not set in stone.
Yeah, I think, I think honestly, I really would love to support, um, fairgrounds. I think it's, I mean, like it's a multi-use facility for sure. Um, I would like to look at this a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
And, and yeah, I think, you know, there's definite support that we can give, we just need to figure out how much.
Okay.
You have the other one for your buddy too? Could we get one for Sandy?
No.
No, I can make her a copy.
Okay, okay.
Oh, no, I do have one. For Sandy?
Yeah, this is the big one.
Yeah, and I think we got that other one last meeting, I have that as well.
Do you have the little one too?
I, yes, I have my one.
And I don't want to pass over it, Jenny, still want to make fun of it.
Well, the only thing I wanted to say, I, I don't know if this is a point of clarification, this helped a little bit, but, um, SCOW Ed, Betty Riley, it's SCOW Ed assisted with the fifty thousand dollar grant. There was, um, a small grant from Ford Family Foundation, a TA grant, as she said. And then there was a fifty thousand dollar grant that actually paid for the majority of this plan that you have before you right now. And that money, I believe, came through Business Oregon. So just to help you understand where the money came from. And, um, Ford Family Foundation was here the last two days. The Community Economic Development Department of Ford Family Foundation, we visited, um, with Ronnie at, uh, the fairgrounds and they're interested in what's going to happen and go forward. So my thought, I mean, it's just me thinking off the top of my head, is it probably what can happen once, um, this next phase, which is going to include some more realistic figures? Is it then, um, I think what's going to, I mean, it just seems logical to me that a, a plan of how to fund it is going to happen and one of the players is probably going to be, I would think, Ford Family Foundation. It's just going to be a matter of putting together then the financial plan, how are we going to do this and, and in what phases and stages? And I think that's, you know, that's what Ronnie basically said, but just so you, you know, so you understand there's, oh, gonna, I can't imagine there's not going to be several players in all of this. And there have been to this point, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that would help a lot. Your point is, you know, it goes to the parking lot, blows me away.
It would, I'm sure they're talking pavement.
Probably, yeah.
You know, so I don't know all that was quoted in the, um, Park City Master Plan that we put together five years ago or six, maybe.
Been a while?
In a while. But I'm wondering if, if there may be some incorporation of some of the things that were called out in that as projects that we'd like to see, if that can help in also some of the funding that might be...
I haven't even seen that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Because my mind wants to hockey or something. If you've got a covered barn...
Not your wife, it was really nice to see guys, can you name the middle?
Thank you, Ronnie.
Okay, you bet, thank you, you bet.
All right, we'll move on down to new business. Janine?
Thank you, Mayor.
The DLCD planning grant?
Correct. This is the first time as town planner that I got an opportunity to come to council. We have an opportunity to make application with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for a planning grant to update our development code. We, as you, you know, we just recently finished an economic opportunities analysis and a housing needs analysis. And building on those two documents, it would be nice to have a review of our development code to incorporate, um, additional housing types, a review of development standards to encourage economic development. to incorporate additional housing types, review our development standards to encourage economic development in housing. And one of the items for the right application is a letter from the council authorizing making an application. So that's my reason to be here today and ask for your support to file the application.
So...
Yes.
Councilor Johnson.
All right, I'm just going to ask my question and not go to where I wanted to go, but are, are we going to be seeing a consultant probably hired to do this, or is this going to be something that you could potentially, you know, get a group together and kind of undertake?
I, I think...
Typically, the state wants to see a consultant hired and can do the work, or...
Consultants may not know our area.
Well, I accept that. Again, what would drive it is our, is the two plans. The economic opportunities analysis already identifies our community and what the strengths and weaknesses are and what's missing. The housing needs analysis does the same thing. So I, I know where Councilor Johnson is coming from. It would be a consultant. And we would, of course, draft the, the contract, and we have some ability to, you know, frame it within the reference of our community as it's represented in those two reports.
If you're comfortable doing it with a consultant, then that's your call. I mean, we'll be obviously the one that's the final adoption, you know, that you present here. But I don't want to, for one, and that's why I was wondering, because a lot of times it's consultant, and then you still feel a lot of the work, or the majority of the work, and it can be very overwhelming and time-consuming, and knowing that you're not, you know, full-time staff, it's like, it could eat into your, you know, little we give you each year. So it's just something that, you know, obviously, we've got a pretty outdated code, and it's nobody's fault other than the code changes every year, and to keep up with it is difficult, and a lot of the changes don't matter a lot. But yeah, like you said, the housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis gave us kind of some areas, the communities that, you know, were attending a meeting, gave some suggestions for change and what might help update our program which came from you. I just don't want to make a, a project that, you know, ends up just being overwhelmingly difficult to actually accomplish with, you know, in a timely manner.
Well, I, I appreciate, you answered your own question. There isn't adequate staff here to, you know, take a project like this on. But the development code is from two thousand and one.
It's not quite twenty-two.
The grant process, there's a lot I would like to do. There's several things that need to be addressed that actually won't fit into this grant application. So that alone would keep me busy addressing specific things like marijuana retail stores and food trucks.
Signing.
Signing.
Sandwich boards.
And the annexation of...
So this involves writing new codes, and who's going to be enforcing new codes? Who's going to be the code enforcer?
Well, it would be, it's not codes, it's planning codes, so for development.
Oh, so rezoning? So this for rezoning then?
No.
No, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
The development code that, that provides the standards for development, we want to update. But this project does not rezone any property specifically.
For example, one of the things that's good about build a new house, they say you have to have a twenty-five foot setback from your neighbors. Maybe ours currently says five foot setback. Bigger towns now have, you know, ten foot, or minimum lot size, things like that. Those are the issues. It wouldn't be enforcing current buildings. It would be people who are remodeling or...
So, and I would also, just thank you for the application, and also that, that I would, I would be in favor of a code update as long as it gives more flexibility. I think everybody in this group would probably say that same thing, is that we don't want to become more restrictive, we want to give people more options. Obviously, more options come with process, not, you know, abandoned process, but if there's a way to streamline some of the processes, then that should only be beneficial to the community.
So does this include downtown?
It would.
Anything within ten minutes.
So possibly adopting the six, two thousand and sixteen restored inventory that was done?
I, I have a question to the DLCD right now.
Okay.
The question is, is that if, if the two thousand and sixteen inventory is adequate to put through the GO5 process to...
Okay, okay. Good.
I'm waiting for an answer.
Good, good, thanks.
Nothing to miss out, sir.
I think that while we have the opportunity for something like this, it's great. I, I kind of worry that it will overwhelm us with some of the more major issues. But there's no guarantee, I assume, that we get the grant?
The grant cycle is every two years, so it's now or wait another two years.
It's all how you, you know, frame and present the grant. I mean, obviously, all, every cycle, every community is...
It is a competitive process. I, I should step back. I'm actually talking to DLCD in two, two respects. The planning grant process is very competitive. The numbers I saw from the last byhand and from the state legislature, there was just under seven hundred thousand dollars statewide. So, you know, there is a lot of competition for money, what, what our chances are. There is another program that is under TGM Code Assistance, and that is done on a case-by-case basis. And we're also talking to them to see if we would fit within the framework of their mission, because it is a...
Is this the town council? Yeah. I, I think it's worth, I mean, I guess we don't really have, you know, great odds, so maybe it's worth applying anyways and going from there, whether or not you get it. I'm sort of worried about what happens after it's getting, you know, two million and a half. Well, true, but I mean, it's highly competitive, there's seven hundred thousands, but what they...
Well, where it comes, early coming down to is how Ford, Janine, wants to do it. Because it's, you know, a lot of it's going to lie on you if, if the grant is approved. And I agree with Darwin, you just don't want to overwhelm the, you know...
But that's the pressure I have with hiring consultants, because you end up doing so much of the work still, and it's like, if they just give you a ten thousand, the town, ten thousand, we're going to say, they're going to privately hire you to do a little more than you're going with you, and it's the same work people end up doing anyway. And, you know, just review it, adopt what you feel comfortable, not what they put on your bill.
But we don't have to adopt what they, I mean, if...
No, we don't, but it's like...
They're suggesting it, so it does save her maybe some time going through it, I don't know.
I don't know how many consultants you've worked with, but...
Quite a few.
They're a pan, but they don't do a whole lot of the money they get paid.
On, on another note, so I, I support you going after, I mean, I do.
I don't have to write the grant. I'm sorry, I'm getting some negative feedback here, so...
I think we're worried about your workload more than anything.
And I, I guess I feel like I have made the commitment to do the grant, the application, and that's making a commitment to, to see the town through the process.
I, well, and I think...
Whether that's right or wrong on my part, I, that's what I've done.
We'll support you.
I appreciate you being proactive about it, honestly, so, yeah, you have my support.
And if there's anything I can do to help you, you know, I'd be willing to.
Okay.
I'll, I'll drive the water for the mayor of the town to go to the application.
Let's see, anything else from the DLCD planning grant?
Yeah, I, I just, it's a separate grant, but the small cities grant, do you actually like, do you apply, you know? There's one thousand, and I know it's nothing, but do you have to apply for it?
I have not done most, because I think it's almost unattainable.
But you have to actually apply, and it's never in our budget, so I just want to know if we actually do.
I thought that, I've heard what the town manager does, there were kind of injuries involved in that.
But it's, it's due like, within a week, or two weeks or something. I already did buy it through the county, the counties get like four of them.
Thanks for bringing that up, because with the...
Yeah, a thousand, and it's simple, it's just to sign it and switch contacts on, like, pretty much.
Would the town manager be in the absence? I'll pick it up.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the, under new business is the proposal from Encore Valley Financial. According to Jeff Edlund, where they're already here during the county, the school, or E S D, that would be an ideal thing for us?
Is this similar to what we had in the bucket earlier?
Yeah, yeah, it's a Jeff's name, it's pretty similar to what we're getting.
I think our budget breaks it out of it all before, so I wouldn't be able to see it. I agree with that, though.
Close to what we paid last year.
And I think that's why a lot of, I can't, I'm assuming, never, I'm assuming, I think that's also why that the county that scored is going to hit them on the deal too, so hopefully this helps, and I put a role in this. It's going to make everybody work together, you know, better, more in the budgets.
Do you make a motion to accept?
Yes.
A motion to accept this proposal?
I'll make a motion to accept the Encore Valley Financial Audit Services proposal for the fiscal year of June two thousand and nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty.
Motion made in seconds, on your behalf?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jeff. Uh, next on the agenda is Veronica Dial regarding animals?
She didn't come in, sorry. I'm not here.
And then, are you, Erica? Regarding the letter for Ninth Street?
Oh, okay, I need to go back to it.
So we discussed the letter, and we have to figure out a little bit of issues with the county line.
Yep, I guess so.
This right there. And do you know, maybe, is there a yield sign there currently?
Nothing.
Okay, so we're going to dig into it a little bit more, look into what the county's, where they're at on it. And then we also are going to check up on railroads, because I believe there's some obligation there for them to put the yield sign possibly, or we need to make sure that we're not overspending there, these things and things like that.
Okay.
So, I'm pretty much aware on that. And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, next on there is the other, which would be the workshop. I agree with Darwin, I read his email I got today.
Yeah.
I think it would be a great idea, and we're just putting it on down hall. And we're going to close down hall.
It's just those three hours, so...
For three hours, and everybody attend this?
Are we going to request public works, or just office staff and Jeff, since he's in office?
They deal with the public every day.
Personally, I think there should be all of them.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do all of it.
Three hours?
It's very long, it's, it's, it's all worth the investment of your time.
And then we'd be closer to noon to one for lunch.
Yeah, not fun, we just know what quarter time.
Right.
So just make sure we publicize it really well.
So we, by consensus, can tell the staff to please attend and... I believe Ann wanted confirmation of who was going to attend by Thursday, I believe that's what she sent to the county attorney, so...
I can email her.
Yeah. And I'm going to have everybody know.
You know, fire and dispatch.
Yeah, whoever can come. I mean, that's why, talk to Ann and just make sure we don't overwhelm, you know, space-wise.
About eighty-seven people or something like that, so.
We used to have one all the last time, and we weren't full, but it was, you know, welcome.
And, and are we going to attend? I, you're attending anyways, I certainly would like to attend.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
You said it was fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Just don't all sit at the same table discussing, you know, you know...
We'll, we'll just sit all over here and talk about...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, break public...
Yeah, that's right, spread out.
So yeah, if you want to let, I mean, Don, if you find out what our cap is, like, and then kind of extend it to fire dispatch if they have.
True.
We're not going to overwhelm our...
I won't go as a town councilor.
I think Corral's shutting down too, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not going to.
We'll try and get everybody, yeah.
Okay, do we have anything else under this? We go to mayor, council, manager update? I have nothing to discuss.
Next, I don't know, next, October second, the first Wednesday of the month of October, is that the second or the third? Second, is coffee with a cop, and I'm trying to reach out to OSP and then to, and the sheriff's department to do that again, and get that advertised, from like nine to a water mission, so there was something. Is the coffee with the cop for a boat, or a... I took my kids on share.
Then you have kids that are in school.
Well, it's for the kids that aren't, I mean, don't skip school for it, but...
Obviously, but...
But it's for anybody, it's probably like homeschool kids or whatever, but I think it's good, but they're not, you know, school, yes. So it's for anybody.
It's probably a good thing for the older kids.
Right, at this point, you know, a little, I, I would love to do, I mean, neighborhood watch programs, national night out or something like that, but that's kind of a big project, so I couldn't talk to you early this year by audio, but, yeah. I'd love to do it evening, but they're kind of busy, are they, it seems like?
Yeah, I have, I have one thing to do, so, Ginger's stepping away. I, one of the, I, I think it's my county planner have, but it might be my town council have, but, I'm on the Plymouth How, you know, Plymouth Lake Regional Housing Center Board, and I just got off the meeting, it went from two thirty to three fifteen, and in that meeting, it was discussed that we were awarded a grant, which we applied for a hundred and about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to, for housing we have at work. And so I think the cap is like fifteen thousand per home, and that we will, Ginger, Ginger's actually in contact for Lake County, and probably will start some kind of, you know, waiting list or, or application process to kind of...
I'm going over, not this next week, but the week after, and Betty and I are going to sit down and figure out the criteria and, you know, be able to draft the press release and some information, so people will know how to apply and how it's going to work. But it's pretty exciting, you know, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars sounds like a lot, and yet on the internet, you know, how much, how far is it going to go, because we've got a lot of rehab work to do.
Ten of them is not a lot?
And this is still addressed kind of like the old, the stove grant that they had?
It can be used for tons of different things, which will include...
Yeah, it's more expansive than that. It's more really about rehab for, for homes.
It could, roofs were discussed, windows were discussed, insulation was discussed, yes, all, all sorts of projects, so.
Right, foundation work, I mean, there's lots of things, all that.
Is the hundred and sixty-four for Lake, or is it for...
Just specifically there.
For Lake County, yeah, specifically for Lake County. So I'll know a lot more as soon as I get the information in my belt, I'll come and do a presentation so that you'll know how it's going to work and all that good stuff, so. It's very, very cool, it's a start.
I would definitely like to get that information from you.
You know, I, I don't have all of the...
No, once you gather it together, because I've got a lot of owners that would be...
I don't want to say something that's not true right now, because it's just hot off the press.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem.
But it's for rehab, and it is, you know...
I want to know too. I want to know that info too.
Oh, well, it'll be in the newspaper, it'll be all.
I don't want to be too, too honest, but I definitely want to.
It's a start. The thing that's really exciting is, you know, it, it obviously won't take care of everything, but it's a start. And once we, we'll gather so much good information when we do this, because it's as much about that as it is about providing the rehab. I mean, my concept or my thought about it, as not everybody that comes in the door is gonna get anything, but I can really gather information at the time. And that will help us in further, further grants, I hope, so. Okay. Yeah, stay tuned. Thanks.
Yep.
So we awarded that contract to Rockville and Construction to Cateress Lane. And we, Daryl and I got a phone call from them and they are having some concerns. They, they asked our permission to not pave our road until after they get done paving at Red Rock. Because they think that the added traffic run over our new road going into Red Rock would be an issue. But I'm, it's pretty late in the season and they said that they can't guarantee they'll be done with Red Rock until the end of October. So that's pretty darn iffy, yeah.
A little late, it's gonna be too cold.
Yeah, so I think it brings on a whole nother.
We just need to watch temperatures, what needs to happen, I mean, we can't.
So if we got pushed into another season, then it could make it more complicated in our arrangement with C Mac to fund the project. So I, I really feel like we need to tell them to go ahead with our project, whether they're done with Red Rock or not. Get as much as they can at Red Rock, you know, do ours on a regular schedule. Because I, I think we wait too late in the year, we'd end up with an issue weather-wise.
How, how thick are they paving, Jeff?
It's gonna be two lifts.
Two lifts of four inches?
Less than four.
Less than four. My concern with that is exactly what their concern is. The belly dumps and stuff that are gonna be turning in, the trucks that are gonna be turning into Red Rock, being that thin, is gonna pull that up. You're gonna end up digging holes in the gates right there where you turn into Red Rock if you paved prior to then.
I wondered how much total paving they're doing in there, is it gonna be equal to our amount or?
Yeah, I bet it's a lot.
A lot, yeah, with all the parking lots.
Yeah, so we haven't given them a definite answer, that's why I'm talking with you guys on it. Daryl's kind of leaning towards we have them go ahead with our road, but.
I'm very concerned with it being less than four inches of failure. I mean, I've paved a lot of roads in my time and less than four inches, running truck and equipment on it like they're doing up there, you're gonna have a failure. And I could tell you, I felt the kind of specific enough to know that they don't try to end it. If we have a failure, we tell them to go ahead and there's a failure we did with the construction job, we're gonna end up with that. But that's my concern.
So is Red Rock at the table, do you guys have any discussions going timeline? So I'd just bring them in on it too, especially if they're doing paving for them and us at the same time. Help everybody understand the situation.
Sure. It, it may not even be a problem for the C Mac money, you know, so if it turned out to be in early winter, you know, we just need to find out for sure, it's a lot of money.
That's the big thing is finding, I mean, we may have a choice, but.
Yeah.
You know, it is, in my past experience, I've seen a lot of failures doing that.
What about past experience in paving in cold weather?
50 and hot, 50 and rising don't pave, it's been a standard for years. And that's, you know, it's a pretty lenient standard, because it comes out of California. It's 50 and rising, they will not, they would not let us pave, period.
I just, I just think everybody has to be under understanding of timelines and if C Mac is requiring we get it paved to a certain date, Red Rock's gonna have to wait. And I, I, they probably have a contract with them to do theirs, but they have to realize if it fails because we're going too late, then, or the funding situation's bad, then, then Red Rock's gonna have to realize, we won't have the funding to fix it.
Right, there needs to be some kind of agreement there. Because temperature, temperature, moisture and everything else is a factor in that.
A minimum of four inches.
Yeah, yeah, it's already designed, it's a first-class road.
Yeah, it's, it's designed, it can't change that part of it, but, you know, it's, there's a great concern there for me.
Yeah, there's gonna be nitrographic on that road. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
So. We're, I'm gonna take off the town council office right now. We're in a real tough situation in our community right now and I, I want to thank our law enforcement and the school staff and all those community partners who are attending the meetings that are trying to get a really sensitive, scary situation for everybody involved, especially those families that were being named. I, I do want to assure the community that the law enforcement and the school staff is taking the necessary precautions and hopefully everything will get back to normal. It just goes to show that, you know, we are aware of only what we're aware of. And I think we have to be more aware of the community and parents need to, you know, take care of their first and foremost responsibilities. Providing for the family, but also taking care of the family and making sure that everything is right at home, so that that doesn't overflow into becoming a larger issue with, you know, those who could be innocent. And I'm not saying who is and isn't, but I'm just saying that we need to step up as a community and do a little better, so that we can be proud of our community and not become, you know, a community that, that ends up on public and national news because of, of, you know, the way we handle tough situations. So I, I appreciate those that are working hard on this and, you know, I think it, well, hopefully it gets resolved to shortly, positively.
Yeah, I was asked today what I was doing and I said, I'm gonna step back and just let them do their job. Don't interfere with them. They have no reason to, I want them to get it done and find out where, where the problem's at and get it corrected.
So if I put a council on it back on, this council supports our law enforcement doing their job.
100%.
And the community in any way that helps lead and information gathering is appreciated.
First thing we do is talk about kids.
Big parents.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Anybody out here?
Ray, you were going to, Jeff and Ray both, you were going to discuss the town flag acquisition, I did not see that on the agenda.
I did not know that was supposed to be on there.
We really haven't made any progress, other than we got the apparatus for dealing with it, nothing official that's happened yet. We haven't taken physical control of it.
So currently the town is not physically responsible or financially, and we are going to try to assume that responsibility. Right, correct? So we have the tool.
We have the tool.
We're gonna get a backup tool maybe?
Yeah.
Just in case. And then there will be a financial transfer funds as well, so that we can follow through with when the flag gets tattered and needs to be replaced. Okay, thank you, Jeff, for, thank you for following through with that as well.
I think we need a smaller flag right away. I've had a real problem communicating with the person that's in charge of it right now. I've had trouble getting ahold of them, you know, health issues.
I understand. Well, we've got one there, it looks like it's doing good. Uh, it's fixed and so we can maybe move towards.
Sure.
Getting a smaller one if you feel like that would be more appropriate down the road. Is it just not waving as well as it should?
Oh, no, it's, it's gonna get destroyed by the heavy weather, yeah. Yeah.
Just to say something real quick, do you mind during the summer, might you put a larger flag during the winter time, including whether you take to put out a smaller one?
Right.
And that's, that's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, yep.
I can look at flags and see what's the most, because they get to the flag and make it.
Jeff, have you seen the flag that they have ready alongside the freeway?
Yeah.
I have a friend of mine that is in charge of that flag and I can contact him and see what his recommendations are.
I like the one, I was just saying, Burns, that one's big.
It's like the one right there at ACW.
Yes.
It's like the one they have in Redding.
This one's 20 by 30. It's a big flag, one of those up now.
And that was like $600, if I remember correctly. But we do appreciate the organization that was handling it replacing that very much. And we would like to take that burden off of their hands, since everybody thought it was ours anyways. We might as well get in trouble for it if we're not taking care of it, right?
We're already getting in trouble for it.
Exactly.
Okay, if nothing else, then we will return the council meeting at 5:03.